Cameras are on? Okay. Scott, cameras on?
Yes.
I see flashing lights, so I'm, he, I'm pretty sure he just gave me the sign. He was wondering where we were. Okay. I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll, please.
Belkey?
Here.
Belzak?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Marques?
Here.
MacIver?
Here.
Shower? Seifert?
Here.
Six present and one absent. We have a quorum. The next item of the agenda is questions and comments of a general nature. If anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on any item, we added this to the agenda a number of years ago. For residents, if they couldn't sit through the whole meeting, if they wanted to address the city council on any subject matter, they could do so at this time. So, I'd like to offer that to the audience if anyone would like to address the council. Then let's move on to the approval of the minutes of July 7th, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve?
Correction.
After. First, we have to get the motion on the floor.
I'm on a roll.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Marques. Discussion.
Twice in two weeks I've done that, okay. I apologize. The last city council meeting in the minutes, it shows that we voted for $163,066. It's in the minutes. It was actually $163,055. I've already informed the clerk of that.
Okay. It's new business, item C. Okay. Okay. In the minutes, you mean? Yeah, correct. Okay. Page 12. Thank you. Any other additions or deletions for the minutes? The roll, please. MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seifert?
Abstain.
Okay. I have six that have agreed with the abstention going for the approval. Okay. The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. I'd like to start. We, I think you were all copied on the letter I received from Mrs. Shirley Miller of Timber Lane regarding the clock tower that we're putting up. And she is, she wrote a letter opposing the electronic chimes. I think you were all copied on that, so I want that on the record. Secondly, I received a thank you note from Mayor Cunningham of the village of Woodridge. She said, "Thank you for joining in to, with the fireworks. It was a fantastic show." Did any of you, Alderman, attend the fireworks? She said it was bigger and better than in past years. So, she thanks us for being, participating in that. I'd also like to thank Pine Parkway for inviting me to their homeowners association this past Saturday. They do, they do a great job. And Dan, we have to talk about the trees when we get a chance.
Okay.
So, that subject matter came up. Also, Jerry Legansky, who lives on Sawyer Road, came by to say thank you to our police department. I'm not sure which officers, is it Officer Rubidy that has the dog?
Yes.
It is Officer. So, it must have been Officer Ruby. And another officer attended their block party, I think it was a week and a half, a week, two weeks ago. And the dog was, received rave reviews. He was the hit of the party. So, Jerry just said, "Thank you for that." And he wants me to give some advertising, free advertising for their annual garage sale, the Sawyer Avenue Garage Sale, which is going to be held on August 8th and 9th. And he's very proud of that. From issues that he had at his home, he started a neighborhood watch on Sawyer Road. And now, he's graduated to block parties and garage sales that are big hits. So, kudos to Jerry Legansky and all that he's doing there. And any other announcements? Alderman, Belkey?
Yes, I received communication from Greg Pardis on Alabama and Chestnut. And I don't know if the council may remember, but he did speak at one of our meetings. He has an issue with his property and water issue. There's drainage problems in front of his street and his backyard. And he was frustrated with the city that they could not find money in the budget for his drainage problems. But yet, they found this money to build a clock tower and, you know, took away from some necessary aging infrastructure. So, that's one communication. The other one is I received from Chris Satt. And there, we thought the problem was solved at the park near his residence with the farmer's market. And last week was the worst week, he said, in addition to Friday where we had the movies in the park. So, it was causing some problems. So, we're working with the chief right now to address those.
Yes, I, you know, in spite of the fact that we spent one and a half million dollars on drainage issues, you know, the resident was upset that we hadn't addressed theirs yet. But I believe that's on the calendar for next year.
He's scheduled for 2015. And Dan's been in contact with him.
Yes.
Yeah. So, that's a vast improvement from what we've done since I became mayor. We started this ditch program. And I know we have a very long list of more ditches to do. But we're making a million and a half in road each year. So, that's, we're doing a good job. Alderman Marques?
Yeah, just to comment, since we brought that up. Dan's aware of this. I've gotten a lot of calls from a lot of residents with regard to drainage issues. It seems with all the rain we've had this year, people are noticing things that they've never noticed before with regard to drainage. Dan and I have a project, have a home over on Sawmill Creek. Martin Clara.
Correct.
And Marty has got an issue with side yard and rear yard. And we did the same thing with Marty. We told him, you know, we don't have the money for it this year and that we would be more than happy to investigate and put on the list for next year. But it just seems like this year, I've received more people calling me saying, you know, "Can you come over and take a look at this because I have a problem?" And I think a lot of that is because of all the rain we've had this year. People are seeing something that they might not have seen in the past.
Any other receiving of communications?
I actually received a communication from Davenport Architects today. I was talking in my day-to-day business and we got to talking about how great it is to work for the city of Darien as an architect, that the processes are so much smoother. And anytime he gets a project, working for the city of Darien, he just loves it as opposed to any other, any of the other community. So, that's a kudos to you and your department, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you.
And have we, did we have a meeting after the 4th of July parade? We have that?
July 6th.
We did, okay. So, we already said thank you to the Lions Club. You missed a great parade, Alderman Seifert. New route, and I think it's, I think, Scott, I think you said we've, we got 200 responses?
Yes, on the survey we sent out, we received 201 responses in total. And all were very positive.
Of the new route?
Most were very positive.
Yeah, so.
Can I ask, Scott, out of those residents that responded, were several of them from 71st Street?
It looked like it. It didn't ask their specific address, but it asked them from where they watched it from. And in the comments, you can glean that a number of them were from there. There were, there was at least one negative comment from someone that used to be able to walk to the other parade route. Now, they couldn't walk to that parade route. So, it seems like people like to be able to walk to the parade.
There's actually a petition being circulated to make that change permanent.
Well, I don't think there's going to be too many people fighting it, really. It's, you know, the Lions Club, I think is, I think they're thrilled, you know, that it was received as well as it does, as it was. And we've done the survey now, so we've heard from a number of people that they really liked it. It's a nice shady street. I think that was the definite benefit for all of us walking in it and all the people watching. Any other communications?
The only other thing I've been getting, and I think everybody's getting these, is the complaints regarding the 71st Street construction and the dirt and the time. We'll let Dan speak to that later.
It's a, it's a big headache, a big headache. Dan, did you want to address any of that? I know that our water main project is pretty much done except for one small portion.
Actually, they're starting to move along, believe it or not, rapidly. One example of that is on 71st Street. If you noticed, there's curb and gutter starting to go down on the north side, just west of Cass Avenue, almost up to Farmingdale. I believe they should be out there today or by today. So, after that curb and gutter gets put in there, the road will be being put back, put back in place. And everyone needs to keep in mind that the existing concrete that where the median was, that concrete will be coming back out again. And the road will be getting shifted back over until they do the other side. So, there is some, you know, patience time. I know it's been restriped. We've asked the county and their engineering firm to restripe parts of it. I know there was some confusion a couple of weeks ago in regards to how it was fading. As far as Cass Avenue goes, Cass Avenue, the contractor has an incentive. It's basically a 45-day completion, completion time that he has. And within those 45 days, he has to have Cass completed. If he does not, there's a $5,000 a day penalty for not completing it. And so, it's moving along pretty rapidly. I'll have another update next Thursday to see where the scope of it is and where the schedule is. There's a couple of utility delays. One of them right now is Comcast. They've been very negligent in responding to DuPage County in moving some of their infrastructure that's currently at 71st Street and Cass Avenue. So, we're going to try to reach out to Comcast from our behalf and see if we can also help them make that happen out there. If there's more specific questions, I mean, there's a lot of things going on. There's basically three to four crews out there working every day. Just various, various aspects of it, from storms, from storms or to earth excavation and curb and gutter, for example. So, if there's anything I could specifically answer, I'd be more than happy to answer that.
I noticed as I was coming through the intersection about maybe 4:30 that they were putting asphalt down, oh, on, on the westbound side of 71st Street. It appears that they've completed some of the underground work there. So, are they getting that roadway prepared to start shifting traffic? I was not understanding why they were putting the asphalt down. Or is that going to be a binder, a lower, a course under the concrete?
Actually, what you probably saw was asphalt grindings, which is used for a subbase. You know, it looks like asphalt, it's basically the same pile that we have at the Heritage Plaza on a BP Amical site. So, it is a good backfill product.
Okay, that's what they're doing, all right.
And Dan, I know you've been attending the meetings. Are they, what kind of completion date are they giving? Or are they giving a date to say, "Okay, the traffic part should start improving"?
Currently, the total completion is November. November means that with landscaping, when I say with landscaping, it's only going to be sod at this point, not the traditional landscaping that we think of with trees, berms, et cetera, et cetera. So, by November, and I believe it's the middle of November, is the deadline. So, we really don't have anything more than that at this point.
Dan, what happens if you have events, like rain events and what have you, that puts the project behind and the contractor has no control over that? Does he, does he still get, you know, fined $5,000 a day? And how do, how do they go around those kinds of issues?
The answer is no. There's things called that are, in the contract world, if you want to say, there's things that are called controlling, controlling items. Controlling items right now, for example, is the storm sewer. So, everything is revolving around a storm sewer. And in conjunction to your question, every time it rains, it's called, it's basically a rain day, rain delay, and it does not count against the contractor.
Thank you.
Well, if there's no other receiving of communications, I'll move to the mayor's report. And we, we have the honor of honoring two of our Darien youths tonight, Darien residents, for some, some pretty spectacular accomplishments. I'd like to read the proclamations. And it goes like this. "Whereas the PTA Reflections Program is an arts-based, nationally-run program. And whereas the six categories of competition are literature, music composition, photography, visual arts, dance choreography, and film production. And whereas the three levels of competition are council, district/region, and state. And whereas the winners of the state competition are recognized nationally. And whereas the students whose entries advanced to state were recognized this year at an awards ceremony held at the Kirkland Fine Arts Center at Millikan University Campus in Decatur, Illinois on May 3rd, 2014. And whereas 25 entries from District 61 students were submitted. And whereas of the 25 entries, six made it to the state level. And whereas two of the six state eight-level entries received honorable mentions. And whereas Miranda Lowry, an eighth-grade student at Eisenhower Junior High School, received an honorable mention at state for her visual arts entry titled, "Holding Back the Rain." And whereas Deana Tantillo, a sixth-grade student at Eisenhower Junior High, received an honorable mention at state for her visual arts entry titled, "The Giving Tree." Now therefore, I Kathleen Weaver, Mayor of the City of Darien, do hereby proclaim July 21st as Miranda Lowry and Deana Tantillo Day in the City of Darien and urge all residents to congratulate these very talented students on their success." So, Deana, and you are called Deana, right? It's not, I didn't mispronounce that, okay. Deana, Miranda, do you want to come up and receive these, these proclamations in your honor? Oh, my goodness. And you, you brought your projects with you. Please, please come up and, and why don't you go to the microphone and explain what you did? Oh, okay. So, we're a little nervous about that, okay? So, why don't you, do you want to stand, yes, please tell us about, that obviously is the Giving Tree. So, the microphone. Yes, can you, can you go to the microphone? Will you? I know this, this is challenging, but it's, it's a good thing. Do you want to tell us about it?
Sure. It's a colored pencil drawing.
Can you, can you grab the mic, can you pull the microphone down to yourself? Okay. There you go.
Um, it's a colored pencil drawing. And I worked at a, at an art class we, I go to with my friend. And on the branches, it says, "Believe, Dream, and Inspire." And that was the theme of the art contest.
Very good. And you received honorable mention. And, okay, and now, do you want to tell us about yours?
Well, my artwork, it's called "Holding Back the Rain" because while I wanted to get creative and I decided to shove crayons and hot glue gun. And I kind of just let it rain down.
How cool.
And then, I painted the person. And it's like, holding back the rain.
Oh, good. Do we have a cameraman here by the name of Scott Coran? Okay, why don't you girls come up and receive your proclamations?
You know, Mr. Gondbeck enjoys your project about holding back the rain so he can get all his work done. So, I think that's pretty fitting.
I want to take that picture with me, okay?
Let's do this.
I'd like to come up.
Why don't we stand right in front of the podium? Congratulations. I'll do the presentation. Each one of you gets your own proclamation. All this is good. Congratulations on that.
Okay, ready, one, two, three.
Congratulations to both of you. Whoops. Congratulations. And here's your proclamations. I think everybody on the council wants to give you a proclamation.
Anybody who watched the meeting? Great job. Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I think that's the best part of our job up here, is when we have our, our young people come forward and we honor them for their accomplishments. So, congratulations, ladies. Great job. The next item under the mayor's report is Marilyn Krollick with the DuPage Seniors Council is here to, just to give us a brief overview of everything you do. I think we, I think we fell out of the loop of funding you, and I guess there was a question, so.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Weaver. Thank you. And thank you, Alderman, for having me here today. I'd like to just tell you a little bit about the council. Always proud to do that. The DuPage Senior Citizens Council goes back to 1975 where a group of about six movers and shakers saw the need to be visionary and to advocate for senior issues. Originally, it was advocating for senior issues. We formed one of the first health committees in the county of DuPage. And then, through, we were a volunteer, we were a membership group. For $3, you could be a member of the DuPage Senior Citizens Council. And we had members from all over. And our ranks grew and grew of members. And then, in the early 80s, we had this huge amount of membership that was all concerned about senior citizens. So, we applied for the Home Delivered Meal Grant through the Older Americans Act. At that time, the Y system was operating it. They couldn't implement it very well. We were structured very well to do so. So, we applied for the grant and we got it. And to this day, we are Meals on Wheels in DuPage County. One thing led to another. We got into the homes and saw that there was a need for minor home repairs, yard cleanups. And of course, the ever, ever added value thing that we do when we deliver meals on wheels in DuPage County is we do that well-being check. So, our volunteers are pretty much the frontline of defense. So, all of the membership turned into our volunteers. And to this day, we have an ever-growing cadre of volunteers. And I'm proud to say that we've got about 1,600 on the books countywide. And what that translates now into DuPage County is about a quarter million meals a year, 175,000 well-being checks, about 1,000 yard cleanups, and probably about 50,000 of health and wellness education units. So, we're, we're proud to do what we do and be part of, really, the county of DuPage. How does that translate to Darien? Darien, we serve about 7,000 meals to about 85 seniors. And we do about 6,000 well-being checks through the course, course of the 12-month period on those individuals and also to the minor home repair recipients that we, we attend to. There are about, we do about 50 minor home repairs and yard cleanups to about 20 seniors.
And this is in just in Darien?
This is just in Darien. So, our numbers are seven plus six plus, you know, that's about how many services we do. Now, the funding, everybody, not everybody, but people still consistently think that it's a government program. It is, but it's not government-funded. It's partially government-funded. And it was funded with the idea that whoever would take on the responsibility to do Meals on Wheels would do independent fundraising. So, about half of our budget, less than half, comes from federal and state funds. Through the last few years, I think the economy kind of tanked in 2010, 2009, 2010. 1.5 million was coming from the government. And of course, the state wasn't paying. So, we were probably in a similar situation as you were in trying to get money from the state. But we weathered, weathered that storm and have built some infrastructure. And we do independent fundraising. So, out of this about 2.5 million dollar budget that we have, about 50, 60% is all done with independent fundraising to meet those goals. And we reach out to the communities. And that's why I'm here tonight. I recently submitted a proposal to you and did not ask for an amount of money. And, but rather showed what the cost gap is in your community. The cost gap varies from community to community, depends, depending on the amount of services and certainly the amount of donations we receive from the seniors for those services. So, I'm here today to ask you for funding. We have always appreciated the support we have gotten from the City of Darien and reach out to you and urge you to continue to fund the programs that we have. Without you, we simply can't do it. We would have to cut back on services. And as you know, growing old is the hottest game in town. Everybody's going to get there. And it's also the hardest fundraising job. Everybody, including myself, is always a, I'm a sucker for that Moriah, that Humane Society commercial where the one woman starts singing that tearful song. And I can't get past about 10 seconds of that. And children are lovely. And of course, illnesses, particularly when they hit one of us, us or one of our own is often always tragic. But everybody's going to get old. And it is a hard sell. But appreciate the support and the vision that you have in funding seniors and hope for your support in the future. I've got some handouts for you, really. I'll just, at the, when you're done with your questions, I will hand them out to you. It's just fact sheets on who we are, what we do. We have very little staff. We have a lot of volunteers. And, and it works. DuPage is a great demographic to make good things happen. And Darien, you are one of the leaders in terms of your vision. And believe me, I deal with all of the municipalities. So, I thank you for your vision and your support. And one other thing I would be, not mentioning is that I was very happy that one of our two major fundraisers, one of them is Dancing with the Stars. And we just had ours the day before Mother's Day at Drury Lane. And I'm very proud to say that one of your own, Ms. Claire von Giovanni, was one of the 12 contestants that participated and gave her time as a volunteer to help raise awareness countywide to seniors. And I'm very proud that we got someone from Darien to do so. Because again, I, I think you guys really have a great vision, my own, my own opinion dealing, and my capacity with all of them. And I thank you, but I do want to, and the handouts I'm going to give you, she's right here in the middle in the program with all of the rest of the folks. So, my, my, kudos to Claire. Any questions you might have?
Now, in the brochure, the, the DuPage Senior Counsel letter that you addressed to us, Marilyn?
Right.
You, you have your cost analysis there and how much for, just for the City of Darien?
Yeah.
How much the seniors contribute and how much is coming from federal and state? And you've identified a cost gap of 31,900?
Yes.
Which, and now, what you're saying is with these numbers here, this is only for the Darien residents?
This is only for Darien, and it's for the Darien city limits. It's not for unincorporated parts. We do not calculate unincorporated parts in any of the municipal asks.
That was a question, Scott, I believe we had, yeah. But we've identified that this is, these numbers are correct?
Well, we haven't been able to verify. They don't provide specific addresses or names or anything, but we've asked them for that information. They've provided it.
All right. Brian?
Question, Marilyn. On the website, it talks about the minor home repair program, and it shows a rate of $40. Is that what your agency pays on behalf of seniors that request?
That's what we charge. That's what we charge, is $40 an hour. So, excuse me. So, we do not charge for a, an estimate. And some of the jobs are less than an hour, so it would be $20. But let's say if someone had a railing that had to be repaired or a back door and a screen door that needed to be installed, the rate would be $40 an hour. We also have a contractor referral list, which is probably not talked about in the proposal. But for all of those jobs that are bigger than what our tradesmen can do, we have a bona fide, certified contractor referral list of plumbers and electrician, people in the trades who we have vetted and certainly know that we, they have insurance and that are known to give good rates for seniors. And then, we follow up on that as well. We put people on, take people off. They are not good actors.
And I remember a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken, the Meals on Wheels program, you weren't adding new
program, you weren't adding new residents to that? I don't know if I'm recollecting that correctly.
Well, the Meals on Wheels program, first of all, the, we partner with the county of Dupage in that they, through the Older Americans Act, they do the assessment and referral for the seniors. So, they're the ones that then assess and say, yes, they do need these Meals on Wheels. Then they refer them on to us. Now, some of the time, we run across seniors as well that we can tell are in need and qualify for the meals, so we do a reverse assessment. But it really is the county that does the assessment and refers them over to us. We find that in times of trouble at the county, if they are, if their funding is such that their department is cut down, then sometimes things in the referrals get slower. But that's just part and parcel to the government, county government being the ultimate assessor of the Meals on Wheels. It's gone down, but it hasn't gone down that much. One of the things we did a few years ago was to work with the county to make their assessment tighter so that the ones who are serving, receiving the Meals on Wheels truly need them. And they're not just anybody who calls into the county and says, hey, I want meals. We do do a few fee-for-service meals. There are people in throughout the county who do not want to deal with a government assessment and just simply have the means to pay for the meals. So, we do do fee-for-service meals as well. Not as many, but we do do those. We also are contracted through the, for the disabled through the Springfield to deliver to people who are disabled as well. And as things move forward with the managed care organizations doing the dual eligibility, Medicare and Medicaid, we are right in the middle of that mess as well and are the, are the vendor for several of the for-profit organizations who will be taking that on as chosen by the state.
So, if the county, if the county does an assessment, and let's just say for an example, they say, here's twenty Darien residents that are eligible, you can handle that?
Oh, absolutely. We have no waiting list in Dupage County. We do not have a waiting list in Dupage County.
That's what I was asking, thank you.
No, not at all.
Any other questions? Alderman, MacIver?
How many total Darien residents are served currently by the program? Not just meals, but like just separate residents that receive some service from your?
Unduplicated, I would say about ninety-five right now.
And that's a combination of Meals on Wheels and home repair?
Home-delivered meals, right.
Not just meals, but also the safety checks?
Right. Anyone, yeah, anyone who gets our service, whether it is the home-delivered meals or whether it's one of those minor home repairs, they get one of that, those safety checks.
Okay, so, those ninety-five residents, then, all of those are qualified for the Meals on Wheels?
No, about, let's see, there were fifteen?
There was, at that time, I think you had seventy-five in, I think, twelve thirteen.
Yeah, I think there's, if you, I can give you the number.
I'm just kind of curious.
No, seventy-five for the meal program and then I've got another twenty for the minor home repair.
Okay, so, that's the additional twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, so, in total then, to serve those ninety-five individuals, and I guess they're individuals, correct? Not?
Correct, they're not households.
So, that's where the fifty-one sticks from the state and federal and then the donations and then the thirty-one thousand nine hundred.
Right.
And to qualify for, there's qualification parameters for the Meals on Wheels, correct?
Under the grant, yes, yes.
Okay, and that, but for the other services?
No.
There's no restrictions?
No, for the other services, we draw that we, well, for community dining, if they should go to one of our community dining sites, and we do have people from Darien go to those, sixty is the cutoff. But for the other, it is fifty-five. Again, we have some folks that are disabled and are right on the border of that age. But if you're one year or two years, we don't throw them under the bus. We will take care of them.
And how does a resident become, how do they, how do they become qualified?
They just call.
They just call?
They just call, correct.
And give their information?
Correct. And we would, I hope that, and if I can be of any service through, personally or my staff, to get you information that you can send out through your water bills or anything like that, please let us know. We'd be able to furnish you information so that they know, all the senior residences, residents in Darien know that they are eligible for these services. One of the other ones that you're going to see emerge this next year is there is a dire need for independent well-being checks. And we're partnering with Metropolitan Family Services to get that going very quickly. Some people need homemaker services and there are plenty of people within Dupage County that provide that. But the minimum that most of them want in terms of hours is three hours. And there are only two, I think there's one now, that will offer an hour worth of service for whatever their rate is, ninety, a hundred and twenty dollars. But they're so inundated with requests for home, homemaker services, for fee, homemaker services, that they never get to those hour ones. So, we're looking to craft a service that would be, we would call it a friendly visitor or a fee-for-service well-being check. We're trying to come up with a snazzy name, but that would offer a senior the opportunity once or twice a week, however that they felt necessary, someone to draw by and to take their garbage out. That's a real big thing is to take the garbage out to the curb where it's going to get picked up, maybe pick up a medication, pick up a loaf of bread, or simply get their Christmas decorations down from a shelf. There would be, there would not be a, this would not be a clinical service. This would not be anything where we would transport them. It would be merely a help-your-neighbor kind of service. So, we're looking to launch that too. Because as we move forward with many more seniors that are healthier and the baby boomers aging in place, they're not necessarily going to need a meal as much as they need someone for that well-being check. So, I see that ten years from now, probably the makeup of the services might be a little different, maybe not, though people still need to eat as well. But hottest game in town is aging because we're all going to get there one day, so.
Any other questions? Alderman, Kenny?
How are you seeing your numbers, you know, going up? Currently, you said we have about ninety-five residents that your group serves the city of Darien. What have those numbers been like now or what have they been like during the financial woes? We had an oh-nine and oh-ten and ten.
Well, I think that, I will check and get back to you, but I think that they have been consistent or have constantly been a little bit higher. There was a period where I worked and pushed the county to do their assessments a little bit better so that the ones who really needed the meals were getting there, were getting the services as opposed to just anyone. But the aging statistic in Dupage County is just going up, up and up. And the latest, I, well, it's about six months old now, but I did see a consolidated plan that came out of the county and that their talk to that then indicated that as well. Certainly, all the census information that I get, both locally and statewide and nationally, I'll speak to that, so.
Any other questions for Marilyn? We thank you very much for coming to our meeting.
We thank you. And with your permission, I'm just going to walk this up to you.
Okay.
Mayor's law.
Okay. This is the document you wanted to hand out?
They're fact sheets. And there are a couple of programs for Dancing with the Stars. And who knows, they may be approaching one of you to see if you'd like to represent Darien next year. Or otherwise, I'll be talking to Claire to see if she wants to get, I know she's got one, she's got one coming for here. And I'm just so excited about that. But if any of you would like to represent Darien on a county-wide scale, please keep that in mind.
I think Alderman Shower volunteered for that.
I'll second, I'll second that.
All favor.
Weight loss in a snap.
I tell you, you better not miss a meeting around here, I'll tell you. That's fun. But we thank Marilyn for, we did not budget this dollar amount this year. And so, we'll just have to bring it up for discussion. Do we have our goal-setting session scheduled yet?
Not yet.
Okay, well, we'll add that to the goal-setting session. How about that? Our list is getting long. All right, thank you, Marilyn. I appreciate that. Let's move on to the next item under the mayor's report, the Darien Chamber update.
Two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen shop, local shop, Darien Cards are now on sale at City Hall for five dollars. We've extended the expiration date to December two thousand fifteen. Last Friday, the Darien Chamber and the city of Darien celebrated a new ownership ribbon cutting at the Sears Outlet Store. We encourage you to stop by to meet and welcome the new owners, the Gilbert, Gilbert family to Darien. The next PM networking event will be held at Q Bar and Grill on August thirteenth at five PM. The event includes networking, food, music, and car show. Bring a guest and get entered into a drawing for a free office party at Q Bar and Grill. The twenty-seventh Annual Darien Fest will be held September fifth through the seventh at Darien Community Park. The entertainment will kick off with the Eisenhower Junior High Marching Band on Friday, followed by DJ set with Noah Shaq. Headliner Gina Glaxton Band will hit the stage at eight-thirty PM. On Saturday, the GMRC Band performs at one-fifteen, followed by Back in the Days. Amy Kelly opens for headliner High Infidelity. Sunday is Family Day with Darien Idol, the Pet Parade, Battle of the Bands, Radio Disney. The headliner, Our Gang, will perform from six PM to eight PM. Wendy City Amusement Ritz Bands will be available on Friday this year from six PM to ten PM and Saturday and Sunday from noon to five PM for twenty-five dollars per person. We're still looking for contestants for Darien Idol and Battle of the Bands. For more details, call me at the Chamber office, six-three-oh-nine-six-eight-zero-zero-zero-four. Registration is now open for the Second Annual Pet Parade, which will be held on Sunday, December seventh. Each participant must sign a waiver for the Darien Chamber.
You meant September seventh, didn't you? September seventh?
Did I say, yeah, did I say the seventh?
You said December seventh.
December seventh.
You're kind of chilly for those pets.
September, September.
Yeah, those are going to be chili dogs.
Each participant must sign a waiver for the Darien Chamber in the Darien Park District. Don't forget, the Darien Farmers Market will be held on Wednesday from three PM to seven PM, followed by a concert in the park featuring Centerfold. Chuck Southern Comforts Cafe will be there selling delicious food and the Chamber will be selling beer, wine, and soda. Save the date for Dancing with the Chamber Stars, a gala event which will be held on Friday, November fourteenth. We are very excited to announce that Mayor Kathleen Weaver will be one of our celebrity dancers. Other celebrity dancers include Tom Papas, Rose Landscape Design, and the Darien Chamber Chairman of the Board, Gail Sablick, who is in our audience tonight, the President of the Wild Orchid Salon, Chuck Pine from Chuck Southern Comforts Cafe, with more celebrity dancers to follow. The Darien Chamber will be celebrating our new member, MFC Sports Performance Ribbon Cutting on August twelfth. This evening, we have Adam Kamuta here to give us more details about his business in the ribbon cutting. Adam?
Thanks for having me, guys. Again, my name's Adam Kamuta from MFC Sports Performance. We just opened in October of two thousand thirteen, so coming up on a year of business now in Darien. What we do is train young athletes to be stronger, faster, more athletic overall, anything that's going to help them to be better on the field, really. We're located on Lamont Road, just north of Plainfield Road, next to the Perfect Swing, if you're familiar with that. So, we do training for athletes all the way down to eight years old. Again, just really trying to get them stronger, faster. Very safe, effective training. Question that comes up frequently is, you know, is this safe for eight-year-olds, you know, younger athletes to be doing? Yeah, everything we're doing is safe, age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate. So, we have the ribbon cutting coming up on August twelfth. I'd like to invite everybody out, encourage everybody to come to that. Really looking forward to that. We offer a number of different types of trainings for these athletes. Athletes can train one-on-one with the trainer in a personal training setting. It's a sixty-minute session, specific to that sport, whatever sport it is that they're participating in, really trying to get them stronger, faster for that sport. We offer open group setting, which is more of a class-like setting. Athletes don't have to know the other athletes in order to participate, they can just come at a certain time, take part in the class. It's really good overall fitness, kind of a full-body workout, going to translate over into any sport really well. We also offer smaller group setting training with two or three athletes. Sometimes brothers or sisters will do this, a couple friends, something along those lines. Then also, we do a lot of team training, whether it's baseball, softball, football, hockey, volleyball. All different teams will come in and train with us. Teams really enjoy that just for them to, a way to get, for them to get together, train together, builds that camaraderie. They feel good about it. And they're also getting stronger, better at their sport at the same time. So, I'd encourage you all, invite all of you to come out, check us out, see what we're all about. If you have any questions, feel free, let me know. You can find us online also, it's mfsportsperformance.com. Check us out. Does anyone have any questions right now about anything that we do? Okay.
Adam, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Okay.
Thank you, Adam. MFC Sports Performance will also be participating in the Business Expo at Darien Fest, so you can find them out there. But try to come to his ribbon coating, it's really cool. His place is really neat. Next up, we have Kim Gilmore from the Wild Orchid Salon, who is going to let everybody know about the big summer bash weekend that's going on at Chestnut Court this weekend.
Hello, I'm Kim from Wild Orchid Salon. It's an Nevada Hair Salon located in the Chestnut Court Shopping Center on the southeast corner of Seventy-Fifth Street and Lamont Road. This weekend, July twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh, our shopping center is hosting a summer bash weekend. Participating merchants will have a sidewalk sale all weekend. Friday night starts at five with Frugal Muse, Books and Music Video New Ownership Ribbon Cutting Ceremony, followed by Ladies Night Dance Party with DJ Noah Shaq. The participating merchants, Oak Ridge Hobbies and Toys, Wild Orchid Hair Salon, Card Frenzy, Frugal Muse, Millard Jewelers, Wilton, Estilo, Me Rancho, Homeroom Pizza, and more, open their doors for special sales, prizes, and great food. The first a hundred participants over eighteen years old will receive a gift bag with surprises from the participating merchants. Make sure to get here early to get yours. This year, our mall is doing something very special and Friday night, we will have the unveiling of our Anarondak Chairs. Local artists have volunteered their time to turn these chairs into masterpieces. There will be eleven chairs on display with different unique themes from Mickey Mouse to beautiful floral designs. These are a must to come out and see. These chairs will be on display from July twenty-fifth until early September. The chairs will also be on display at Darien Fest, where they will be auctioned off to the highest bidders. And all proceeds from the auction will benefit women in Darien going through breast cancer treatment. At the unveiling of these chairs at Ladies Night on the twenty-fifth, you will also be able to meet and greet the artists of these chairs and decide which one would make a great addition to your deck or backyard. Wild Orchid Salon will also be giving free hair, makeup, nail, and skin consultations along with giveaways. Keep this date on your calendar, it is sure to be a fun night. The night starts at five and ends at nine. The event for Saturday, the twenty-sixth, will be Touch a Truck. Bring the kids to the parking lot in front of Oak Ridge Hobbies and Toys for our first Touch a Truck event. Let the kids get up close to a fire ladder truck, ambulance, and city of Darien trucks. This event takes place from twelve to two. If you're early enough Friday to get a gift bag, there might be something there the kids can use at the toy store after they view the trucks. On Sunday, the twenty- On Sunday, the twenty-seventh, from ten to four, we will be collecting food donations at Oak Ridge Hobbies And Toys and Wild Orchid Salon for Lady Of Milk, our mall food pantry. Wild Orchid Salon is giving twenty-five percent off coupons for hair, nails, skincare services to participating dropping off. This will be a fun weekend for our shopping center and we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Okay, they've been working really hard on this event, so, um, we can get everyone to come out and, you know, see what the merchants all have to offer and do a little dancing and have some food. I think it'll be a fun night in Darien. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Yeah, you guys can sign up to get your hair done, yeah.
We're gonna get our hair done.
I know, yeah. I've heard you could look younger without gray hair.
It's hard to imagine, much younger.
Oh dear. Let's move to the City Clerk's Report. No report this evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you. City Administrator's Report.
I have no report either, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, let's move to Treasurer's Report.
Department Head.
Department Head. Whoa, past number eleven, Department Head Information. Thank you all.
Get excited to hear my reports, don't you?
That's right, yes, I couldn't wait for the Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Uh, real briefly, I know that, uh, the Fourth Of July Parade, uh, overtime dollars from the Police Department won't be the deciding factor, but we were able to save three thousand dollars off the price that we spent the last few, three years since I've been here uh, from the parade route. A large part of that had to do with the fact that it was rerouted, we had fewer street closures and our manpower allocation was more efficient based on the route, so.
Boy, it sounds like it's a win all, all around, I tell ya, with, uh, with the route.
First on the agenda this evening is, uh, we, we've had some parking complaints regarding the Farmers Market over at, uh, Darien Community Park. The complaints largely center around parking on Seventy-first Street. For the last week, I was over, last week I was over and did an assessment. And what I found out, that the parking problem is, is, is not such, so much a problem as it is a, uh, impediment to encouraging people to come out to the park. And so, when you look at the signs, there's two signs that prohibit parking on the north side of Seventy-first Street. Uh, one very close to Clarendon Hills, which we want to maintain that one. And then there's a second one at about four hundred on Seventy-first Street and we want to eliminate that one. Uh, the, uh, and at least suspend it for the, the duration of the Farmers Market, just on that Wednesday. Uh, there's also no parking to, on the south side of Seventy-first Street at about the same location and that would prohibit parking, uh, close to Clarendon Hills Road and along the entryway to the park. We want to continue that one. Uh, the, the, the largest issue is, is a lot of the, the participants at the park are senior citizens and they're trying to park as close as they possibly can to avoid walking. So when I was there last week, there was a, a very senior couple and the man happened to be on a crutch and they parked in the, the no parking in, zone in front of about four hundred and I felt like a real heel for having to ask them to move their car in violation of the signs and they were very agreeable and gracious about moving and we had a nice little chit-chat afterwards. But, uh, under, uh, section nine-three-four of the Municipal Code, the Chief has the right to, uh, suspend parking based on, on, on certain issues. And I think in, in, in lieu of the fact that we want to encourage park membership and the parking there does not create a safety hazard of, of any type, certainly we want, would not, would not want people parking, uh, adjacent to Clarendon Hills Road because it would make traversing it into, uh, onto Clarendon Hills or turning off of Clarendon Hills onto Seventy-first Street very difficult. So I wanted to get some feedback from, from the Council, specifically Alderman Bilkey, because that's her, uh, uh, ward there, but about, about the idea of suspending parking for that day, uh, the parking restriction.
I have a couple of questions. The, the first one would be, the resident that brought up the whole issue, is that something that, um, you talked to him about and he thought that was a, a good idea?
Well, actually, I didn't speak specifically. What happened is I was out there that day and what he said was, the, the only thing he was interested in was, was us enforcing the parking regulation because there was no parking. Said, either enforce the parking or take the signs down. And so, uh, if that is the issue, I, I know one of, one of the other issues was pulling into, motorists pulling into his driveway and other driveways along Seventy-first Street to make, to, to make a U-turn and go back in the opposite direction. Problematically, uh, for us, in, in terms of an enforcement issue, there is no statutory or municipal code prohibition that prevents a person from turning around in someone's driveway.
You know, Chief, how many, how many cars do you think would be able to fit in that area that you would be suspending that?
It's probably just one or two, uh, one, or two, uh, maybe three during that period. But it's a space between the two signs, the one closest to Clarendon Hills and the one at about four hundred, four-ten.
Okay. I know that the first time around, there was some extra signage that said there was additional parking on, uh, Plainfield Road.
That was there.
I wonder if anybody's parking on, uh, Rogers Road, 'cause that would be another street that could be alleviate some of the, the parking and it, it is, have good access to the park. So that's, that's one thing maybe we want to talk about and let people know that there's parking there. And I don't know, Claire, if you can help us out with, um, for the Darien Fest, I've seen that we have golf carts, you know, to help maybe with some people that need some assistance getting to and from. Is that something that we can look into?
Well, usually, um, the radio, the people who are working the parking lots, they'll radio us and say, you know, we have a scene right here, can someone come with a golf cart? Or if, if they're in the park, they'll approach us and say, you know, can you give me a ride to my car? That's the only way that we know, you know, is by parking lot either calling us or, you know, the people coming to us and saying, can you take me back to my car?
Chief, uh, you know, the, the diagonal parking along the park.
Yes.
Uh, are all of those spaces taken up and that's when you see, uh, the cars parking?
Those are pretty much taken, taken up, except for the ones at the furthest we, uh, west end of the, the diagonal park at that.
Yes, I know what you mean. They, uh, again, they don't want to walk.
Those, most of those that are closer to the entranceway are in fact taken up.
Okay. Is the Plainfield Road parking lot totally used, uh, at these, at, at the Farmers Market and Concert?
Rarely, because it's so far for them to walk. I think that's what the, the impediment is.
Yeah, this, this is an issue then, you know, because there is, there is parking, legal parking spaces and people are choosing not to use them.
And the other question I had for Claire would be, is, is there a way to move the Farmers Market to the grassy areas so that we can have all the parking lot, parking?
That's the park this year.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure they can move it and actually, I think if they're gonna continue to concerts in the park, it would be nice to be together instead of having, you know, the Farmers Market and the parking lot here taking up their whole parking lot and then we're over here. You know, so maybe they move the Farmers Market a little bit more closer into the park, that, you know, with number one, we'd be closer together, and number two, their whole parking lot opens up.
The problem, though, is the, the vendors have these vehicles that, um, they, they have all of their merchandise in that they need to have close by, so I don't know if that would work. I mean, uh, we know that the Park District doesn't want heavy vehicles driving on their, their, their walkways. Hmm.
Something to explore.
Yeah.
And just to tie into what I was gonna announce at the end of this, is my town hall meeting tomorrow, scheduled at the library from seven o'clock to about eight o'clock, eight-thirty, depending on, um, you know, people's wanting to stay or not. But I specifically went down to everybody's house on Seventy-first Street. So hopefully, a lot of those people will come and I can ask them their opinion, too.
That would be good, to get, you know, because I, I know we dealt with that on Seventy-third Street, uh, near Eisenhower Junior High with, uh, the baseball parking. You know, we, we just, we just had an issue, we just made a decision to allow it for the baseball season and then, you know, um, then not, then not, then eliminate it. So I wonder if residents would go along with that, that, you know, it's just a short period of time that this is gonna happen.
So we can touch base, then?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, okay, for the monthly report, this period covers the, uh, the report covers a period from the second of June to the twenty-ninth of June. Uh, we were prepared to present it last, last meeting, but it was such a full agenda, we put it off until this meeting. So that's why this is somewhat dated, but, uh, it, it does cover the sixth police period. Uh, last night, we arrested a juvenile for burglary to the motor vehicle. Um, he had entered four vehicles total. He had previously been arrested in Woodridge, uh, for burglary of the motor vehicle. Uh, the only reason I'm bringing this up is because we, we proceeded to, to, to arrest and, and, uh, there's some, um, mitigating factors, uh, relative to the prosecution, but all of the vehicles that he entered were unlocked and I, we've talked about this before and, uh, burglary to the motor vehicle is one of those offenses that we can mitigate by simply locking our cars and not leaving, uh, valuable belongings where, where they're visible. Because it is such a crime of opportunity, more often than not, we even saw from the video that we looked at a few months back, is that the, the offender walks by and just checks car doors and if the car door is locked, he goes onto another car in most cases. So what we need to do is make sure that we're advising our residents and, and as we talk to our friends and what have you, to lock our car doors. Another point, we, we're still getting an overwhelming number of calls about telephone scams. Some people claiming to be IR, representatives from IRS, uh, seeking all sorts of personal and, and pertinent information from credit card, from, uh, credit card numbers, PIN numbers, credit account numbers, and things like that. The, the biggest thing I have to tell those citizens is, don't, under any circumstances, give out that information. The IR, IRS is not gonna ask, call you up and ask you for a credit card or other information. They're not gonna solicit a payment from you in that manner. Think about it, they can garnish your wages and take your bank accounts, so why would they be asking you for a credit card payment where you have to surrender a credit card over the phone? So, uh, don't, don't, don't do it. If someone calls you and, and, and attempts to solicit you, uh, hang up the phone and dial nine-one-one. Uh, last month, uh, one of our officers, based on a citizen complaint, stopped a white pickup truck and there were two individuals in the, uh, in the truck. Uh, they both claimed to be members of the ROM Gypsy family. Uh, not every member of the ROM Gypsy family engages in criminal act, but those who do specialize in ruse burglaries. This was a, a white pickup truck with a payload on the back that was supposed to carry, uh, cement asphalt sealant. The two individuals in the truck were, one was seventeen, one was a juvenile. They, the truck had no business license, there was no solicitor's permit, but they had been walking, uh, one, one individual had been driving, the other had been walking up and down the block, uh, in one of our communities, attempting to solicit people for this asphalt sealant. Well, believing them to be part of a, a ruse burglary team, and we're not sure whether they are, but based on their, the modus operandi, we thought that it was a good possibility that, that they were. We brought them into the station. When we checked the payload, there was nothing in the, in the truck. So even if they had, they, some resident contracted them to do work, they couldn't have done it. They didn't have a license, they didn't have insurance. So please, please, please inform again, once, uh, again, inform your residents not to participate with people who don't have soliciting, solicitor's permits, who are going from door to door because, uh, it's a very good likelihood they are not legitimate, so. Uh, we arrested those folks. We, uh, were unable to impound the truck. We did have the adult come out and retrieve the truck and advise them that they should never be back in Darien, so.
What, what name did you give the, the individuals? Did you?
ROM Gypsies. It's a, but based on, uh, one of the trainings that we sent our, one of our officers to, uh, she brought back a, a wealth of information about how they operate, what, uh, what the family structure is and things like that. And so, well, she's putting together some training for our officers on it, on, on the ruse burglary teams. That's not the only criminal offense that they engage in, uh, but that's just one of the offenses that they do engage in.
How do you spell that, ROM?
R-O-M. I think it's short for Romanian.
Short for Romani.
Romani.
R-O-M-A-N-I.
Okay. Thank you.
I talked to a resident a couple of weeks ago, uh, and we have some really fine officers who work here, but one of the things that was pointed out, that sometimes, uh, our customers are dissatisfied with our service for one, one reason or another. And then, and one of the things that came up in this conversation is we don't have a, uh, possibly have enough information on how to make a complaint against a Darien police officer and it's, uh, not a very complicated process. Uh, it can, a complaint can be made via the telephone, email, or in-person at the police facility. Uh, I would like to remind everybody that if you make a complaint, you will have to sign an affidavit affirming the, the truth of the complaint. The complaint will be investigated and you'll be contacted with, uh, by a, uh, an investigator within seventy-two hours of lodging your complaint. You'll be kept abreast of the, of the complaint. What we don't do is, we don't, we won't take a, a complaint, uh, that deals with a, a, a traffic ticket, the issuance of a traffic ticket, where the only complaint is that the, the person doesn't believe that they deserved a traffic ticket. That's what the court is for. Uh, and the other caveat to that is, if you say that an officer is rude or unprofessional, you must be specific in saying what the officer did, uh, to, to avoid there to be any, any sense of subjectivity on, on what the officer's conduct was, so you'd have to be very specific. Any questions up to that point?
Chief, I'm sorry, one comment. I know the report, uh, you're reviewing now was sent out in the Police Committee Packet. I don't, it, it's not in, included with the, um, with the full City Council Packet. So if any of the aldermen have questions, uh, after they look at the report or, or look at it on the Police Committee Packet, you could always call the Chief also.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that. I thought it had been sent out. Darien Police Work, a few weeks back, we mentioned the Narcan Program. Narcan is a, is a, is a, a tool for first responders to apply in the event of an overdose. It's nasally ingested, uh, provided nasally to the, the victim of the overdose and it, it's, it basically saves lives. DuPage County, uh, has a countywide program that the medical exam, uh, the coroner and the state's attorney put together and, uh, across the, the county where, uh, most of the police departments are using it. We had two saves using Narcan in the last month and so that, that's a good thing. So that, uh, ordinarily, the, the folks who, who we are able to save would die if we, if we weren't present using it.
To Darien residents?
Yes.
Holy cow.
Chief, with carrying Narcan, isn't that kind of, I, I, death is, you know, it's serious and I get it, but isn't there something of, kind of, giving the, the heroin addicts and drugs, the opportunity to go ahead and do it knowing that your officers are carrying this, this Narcan? It kind of, it kind of seems like it almost gives them permission to do it.
Well, you, you know, I can't say that it doesn't, uh, the, the, the drive for heroin is, is an extremely overwhelmingly strong force. Uh, our goal is to try to save a life and, and, uh, as a matter of fact, one of the lives that we saved, the person wound up going back to heroin and overdosing and did ultimately, uh, pass uh, as a result of a second heroin overdose, not, uh, not the one that he was saved from, so. Uh, that is a possibility, but I don't think that we're giving them a green light. I think we're, we're, we're trying to do the right thing in saving as many lives as we can. I think countywide, since the program has been in, in, online, we've saved about five or six lives in various other jurisdictions in the county. So it, 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 there are pluses and minuses to it, but I think the, the potential to save lives outweighs the fact that we could be given a green light.
Once you, once you save their life ultimately, is there anything where you can go back and, you know, arrest the individual for possession of what, what they had there or no?
No, no, no. They're, they're, they're essentially construed as a victim and if the person who called, they're, they're protected statutorily as well.
Okay.
Uh, our new CSO, Mary Belmonte, was instrumental in, in locating, uh, um, missing suicidal individual, uh, last month. She was pressed into service, uh, we got a call that this individual was missing and making phone calls and, and possibly suicidal. And, uh, one of the sergeants asked Mary if she could help and she placed herself in the position of where these calls could be coming from and what the ground speed was and everything else and actually located, so we, uh, that, that was, that was kudos to her, so she jumped right in and she's only been on ground since Sarah left and so she's already doing good stuff. Uh, our newly hired, uh, Officer Joe Pastick, graduated from Celia on the twentieth of June and he's, uh, started twenty-third of June. He started in, in, uh, field training with, uh, Darien officers. Uh, Nick Squares and Rich Study have done a yeoman's job putting together a training, uh, program for the auxiliary police officers. And the reason why that's important is because we intend to use the auxiliaries to kind of defray some of the administrative time currently spent by our sergeants. So, uh, they, they, they've done an exhaustive job, along with their regular duties, putting together a training program and making sure the guys are trained and, and, and uniformed out, so. It's been a real good thing. Uh, the Detective Division received seven new cases during the sixth police period, bringing the total number of active investigations to fifty-five. Our SRO, uh, Jason Norton, is currently assigned to detectives during school's, uh, vacation time and he's assisting in doing background checks on new officers and other, uh, various detective functions. Uh, we are still sifting through vendors for our remodel of the evidence room. What we're doing is, so please, Alderman Kenny, we're looking for the best price for the, uh, for the product and so we, we've narrowed it down to three or four vendors. We're waiting on some demonstrations from them and some looks at their product before we make a final decision on, on, uh, selecting a vendor. And because of the number of traffic crashes that involve distracted driving, we are continuing our initiative towards, towards distracted driving. Uh, in the sixth, during the sixth police period of the month of June, we had fifty citations plus an, uh, an additional eleven warnings for distracted driving. This is a huge problem. I, I think most of us know that whenever we're driving down the street, there's somebody next to us, in front of us, or behind us and, and all you see is that and, and it's, it's really bizarre that, that we don't have more accidents. And so, uh, here in Darien, we're doing, making our, our due diligence to, to try to lower the number of distracted drivers.
And there's a lot more than meets the eye in your report, because I, I did a ride along, as you know, a couple of weeks ago and a lot of times, they, they find, find a distracted driver and because of traffic or the construction or whatever else, by the time they try to go back and go get them, they're already, they're already gone.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, in terms of statistics, uh, nine-one-one calls were decreased for the month of June by about three percent. That's seventeen fewer calls in, uh, the same time last, last year. Two hundred and seven calls on, uh, nine-one-one calls on day shift. Two hundred and seven calls on, nine-one-one calls on day shift, two hundred and forty-eight on afternoons. Seventy-seven on midnights and twenty-six during the period of three to six, three to seven AM. An increase by four in the number of domestic calls. Fifty-two total arrests for the month, with thirty-nine adults and thirteen juveniles. And an increase by six in suspicious activity calls. Reported crimes, we had three burglaries reported during the month, which is no change from the prior time period. Ten damage to property incidents, mostly mailboxes. We've stepped up our patrol activity at night to see if we can catch somebody breaking the mailboxes. We had a decrease by five in the number of thefts to eight. Two motor vehicle burglaries during this time period, which is an increase of two. And fifteen domestic, other domestic incidents, which is an increase by four. Retail theft, five arrests. One domestic battery arrest, two battery arrests, and two minors consuming alcohol, and three DUI arrests. And that concludes my report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Alderman McIver?
So we had three burglaries in what was the time period?
Six, from June, June second to June twenty-ninth.
Okay, and so you said that's the same as the month, the previous period?
Yes, same time last year.
So that's a, is that like a home break-in type of?
One of them was just items taken, two of them were items taken from a porch. So one of them was a residential burglary.
Okay. And is that being kind of contained to an area, or they're just?
Those were kind of all over the place. We, what we've done is, we've started to step up our mandates on how we patrol residential burglaries. We've asked for some new codes, we got new codes. We've trained the officers as well. It was a topic of the last command staff meeting on how to use the new codes. And so now, what we're asking the supervising sergeants to do is include how much time that they anticipate that they'll need to mitigate burglaries into their resource allocation numbers at the start of each schedule.
Chief, I think if you notice that in an area, you are doing door hangers.
We are doing door hangers.
Also, you know, in the neighborhood if they notice that, so the residents are aware.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Any other department head reports already?
I did have something for Dan.
Okay.
Dan, I've been getting a lot of questions. Obviously, we know that in one fell swoop, I'd Christmas tree farm was gone one day, there the night before, gone the next day. And it's, I guess we were kind of surprised that we didn't know it was coming. And it seems like we haven't even gotten any kind of information from Woodbridge on the development schedule, because that's been something that the residents in the area have been asking about. But, you know, I think it's kind of moot now, because they're going full steam ahead. Is that something that's going to be at all disruptive, you know, as far as city? Because I saw one day the city, the street was closed, two of the lanes were closed, or the one lane plus, so people had to use the center turn lane as a lane. Is that being coordinated at all with Darien, or how does that work?
The answer is yes, it is being coordinated. There's some oversight also from an engineering company. Polte Homes is the builder out there. Polte Homes also hired Christopher Burke Engineering to do some of their oversight. Some of their oversights includes stormwater mitigation reviews, as well as certain engineering aspects in the Village of Woodbridge. Is also overseeing the operation as far as some road closures. Yes, there will be some minor road closures, and those are due to utilities such as storm sewer. And I believe there's also some water main in the area there as well. So with that said, also with the trees, I know everyone was pretty shocked in reference to the trees, but it's my understanding that Polte did have a consultant that came out there and basically said it's not worth transplanting these trees due to the survival rate. So that was something that was reached out to them. And the Park District also, matter of fact, had reached out to them in respect to possibly taking some of the trees. So the end result is, yes, they were all taken down due to their mortality, and based on a study that Polte had completed. As far as the construction schedule is, there are still no, there still is no, you know, construction schedule. Again, there's nothing that mandates a construction schedule. Right now, they are in their infrastructure stage. The infrastructure stage typically for a subdivision would take about two and a half months, depending on how they're going to phase it. Again, we really don't know at this point, but it appears that, it seems that they would have it in phases, the subdivision for the hundred and fifty homes. As soon as we find out additional information, we'll forward that to you.
Yeah, I know, it sounds like they're going to be selling the homes like starting next year. That's according to what I've at least read in the paper.
Doesn't Polte build multifamily?
In this case, it's residential.
But it's, they're squeezing, I mean, if you look at the, it's like when you drive by, it's like a postage stamp. You know, they just raised all the trees. They call it timber's edge, which I think is kind of funny, since they took down all the timber, but I guess it's on the edge of it. They, they're squeezing in a hundred and fifty homes in there. And, you know, if you go on their website, they show what they look like. So they're kind of narrowing taller. They're saying they're going to be four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar homes, but I don't know. It's a lot of, it's a lot of homes in that footprint, I would say. I mean, wouldn't you, I mean, you saw the plan.
I saw the plan. I mean, it's obviously the Village of Woodbridge, and it went through their zoning processes, and that's what they eventually had approved.
Which is hideous.
We were more concerned about the traffic, and the traffic would not cause any impact to Eighty-Third Street there.
And any residents that see any of that construction traffic potentially cutting through the Farmingdale Village subdivision should report that immediately to police, correct? Because our roads aren't.
Number one, that is correct. And number two, they've already been notified prior to the developments beginning, that no City of Darien streets will be utilized, with the exception of Eighty-Third Street, which we have an agreement with the Village of Woodbridge on a joint co-op for resurfacing through a grant. So we're basically going to wait for development to start, to finish up on the heavier equipment infrastructure work, if you want to say. In conjunction with that, the developer is also contributing a certain amount of funding for Eighty-Third Street, which was negotiated between Woolbury, excuse me, Woodbridge and the City of Darien.
And then one more thing that came up a little while ago, and I don't think I ever got a follow-up. The, speaking of Woodbridge, the Ace Hardware area, the Dunkin' Donuts, the dumpsters, the garbage men coming really early in the morning before the time they're supposed to be there. Has that been addressed with the village?
I know it has, yeah, it has been addressed. Matter of fact, the police were out there, the Woodbridge police were out there also. They, I'm not sure if they issued citations, but there was action on that. I'll have to double check why, I believe, I do recall.
Yeah, I mean, it was within the last month or so. It was like four AM, the garbage trucks are coming, you know, right behind residents' homes. Okay.
We had that issue behind the Darien Plaza one year, I remember. And it was, what the garbage companies told us was, it's, you know, vacation time. So these, they've got new guys in there covering somebody's vacation, and they're in there way too early.
Yeah, it kind of goes away and then comes back, and then goes away.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number fourteen fifteen oh five, in the amount of seven hundred thirty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents, from the listed funds and payroll for the period ended July tenth, the amount of two hundred seventy-eight thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty-six cents, for a total be approved of one million fifteen thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Questions for the treasurer? Then the roll, please. Seifert?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marquez?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent. The warrant has been approved. The treasurer's report?
The revenue and expenditure report for the two months ended June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, reflects the general fund, year-to-date revenue of two million eight hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars, expenditures of two million three hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars, for a current balance of two million one hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Water fund, year-to-date revenue of twenty-six thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars, expenditures six hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars, for a deficit cash balance of seventy-one thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Motor fuel tax fund, year-to-date revenue two hundred thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars, expenditures fifty-six thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars, current balance two hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred dollars. Water depreciation fund, year-to-date revenue six hundred and forty dollars, expenditures of nine thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, for a current balance of six hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue two million six hundred eleven thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars, expenditures of six hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, for a current balance of seven million one hundred forty-six thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. And the capital projects debt service fund, year-to-date revenue two hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars, expenditures of thirty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, for a current balance of two hundred twenty thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Questions on the report? Alderman Belkey?
I have a question on page three on the general fund. There's negative interest income. Can you tell us a little bit about when we would see that?
I'm seeing positive three around the same page.
What, what page was it?
Thirty-five, yeah, this is, but you're in the water fund, so. In the general fund?
Ah, okay. That's probably a reclassification. Oh, actually, the reason you'll see it, if you noticed, last month in the May report, there, it showed a deficit cash balance. So even though we have a, it's going to take a little bit of explaining. Even though we have a positive balance in the, in the fund balance, a lot of the fund balance is represented by non-cash items. For example, accounts receivable. So last month, at the end of May, since we always do our transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement fund, as we move the entire two million dollars over. If you looked at the cash report, the last statement, this month it's positive three hundred seventy-seven thousand. At the end of May, it was a net deficit of two hundred and some thousand dollars, which means the general fund actually borrowed cash from the capital improvement fund, because it had a deficit. So the general fund actually gets charged interest for that deficit during that period.
Any other questions for the treasurer on the monthly report? Then let's move on to questions and comments. Agenda-related, do any of the aldermen have any?
Standing committee reports?
Oh, here I, I'm missing again. Standing committee reports. Alderman McIver?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next police committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, August eighteenth, six PM, in the police training room across the parking lot, pending agenda items, and if I remember.
Okay, Alderman Marquez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next Monday, July twenty-eighth, the municipal services committee will meet here in the council chambers at six-thirty.
And since Alderman Shauer's not here, Admin Finance will meet on Monday, August fourth, upstairs at six PM.
Thank you. Yes, try.
And just a reminder, the police pension fund will have their quarterly meeting next Wednesday, July thirtieth, at seven o'clock, at the police training room across the street. And just to add a little excitement here, I talked to the actuary today, and he's anticipating having our current actuarial report finished, which I intend on reviewing it and presenting it at that meeting. So just, I know you guys are all anxious to get out there and get a jump on reviewing the actuarial report.
And how much we're going to have to contribute next year.
Well, that's the idea, but I think we've had a reasonably good year in terms of investments, so.
Thank you. Let's move on to questions, comments, and agenda-related. We didn't have much of a work session at all, so is there any questions or comments from the aldermen on any of the items? On the consent agenda or new business?
I guess I would bring up item E. And Dan, I talked to Dan a little bit about this, because I had some questions. A lot of discussion took place about the drive-throughs, and I was pleased with the answer that Dan gave me. But can you go over that a little bit for the viewing audience?
Sure. One of the items in the approval this evening is in regards to the drive-throughs. First of all, there's a potential for four drive-throughs. Currently, the way the developer's going to be building it, there will only be two drive-throughs. So let me do a quick example here. Let's say, for example, that Starbucks was coming in, they're not coming in, was coming in a north building on the north side. That would be an ideal place for a drive-through on their north end. The second one, the second drive-through would be on the south end of the north building. So let's say that Jim's Meat Market is going there. If Jim's Meat Market wanted to put in a drive-through, he can put in a drive-through. Currently, Jim's Meat Market would not want a drive-through, and there is no drive-through going in on that location. Instead, there will either be a turf area or a parking lot. The second building, which is the most southern building, again, El Burrito was supposed to be moving into that one, in which case he would have had a drive-through on the farthest north building, or north space of the south building. Since he's moving out, and moving across the street to Pammy's, there's still the potential for a retailer with a need for a drive-through to come in there. The southern portion of the southern building also has a provision for a drive-through. Currently, there is no plan for a tenant to have any drive-through. But the idea behind this was to be able to take all these items, instead of coming back to the city council or to the planning and zoning commission, and requesting these types of variants for a specific use for a drive-through, where it gives staff and the developer and the retailer flexibility to be able to come into city hall and provide a plan, as well as a stacking plan. Bottom line is that, we know that a McDonald's would not have room for stacking in that plaza or Burger King. So there is a stacking plan that an engineer, a traffic engineer or architect, has the ability to bring to city hall, in which, again, is in their ordinance again this evening, as a condition if and when a drive-through is required.
Okay. Alderman Belkey, do you have any more questions?
And I just wanted to add that we talked about, I was a little concerned with the parking situation. So Dan said that the parking ratio would be about five to one.
It's four, excuse me, it was four to one.
It's four to one.
Four thousand, excuse me, four spaces per thousand square feet.
Any other questions? Let's move to, there, let's move to old business, and there being no old business, we'll move right to the consent agenda. I'd like to read the items on the consent agenda this evening. First item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the City of Darien to enter into a contract with municipal web services to redesign the Darien website in an amount not to exceed ten thousand nine hundred dollars. And the next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to purchase a copier from Rico in an amount not to exceed two thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy cents for the sergeant's office. And the next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to purchase a copier from Proven in an amount not to exceed five thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents for our records department. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to purchase a copier from Image Systems and Business Solutions in an amount not to exceed one thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and eighty-six cents for our municipal services department. The last item is a motion to approve an ordinance approving a final plat of subdivision and special uses and variations to the Darien city code for our Darien Point, which is located at seventy-five seventeen to seventy-five thirty-three Cassie Avenue. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marquez, seconded by Alderman McIver? The roll, please. Marquez?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent. All items have been approved. Let's move to new business, and the first motion, the first item is a motion to extend the Darien Point purchase and sale agreement, due diligence period to September first, two thousand fourteen, and to authorize a purchase price credit in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars to account for extraordinary costs relating to substandard soil conditions, as confirmed by the city's consultant. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marquez, seconded by Alderman Seifert. Briefly, we discussed the fact that when we put this memo together and this motion together, we had, we used the number, the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. It's come to our attention now that, after some, some studies, that, that amount will not be needed for the project. It turns out that only one of the buildings has substandard soil, and will only require seventy-five thousand dollars in an expenditure. And that the parking lot also came in much lower, and there's, they only consider about fifteen thousand dollars for soil remediation there. So we, we feel that we can go with a lower number on that. And I believe, we talked about the number of, I believe, a hundred twenty-five thousand.
Correct.
And so I'd like to throw that down the floor for discussion. And so I'd like to throw that down the floor for discussion.
I spoke earlier during our little brief work session, that I'm, I know that we need this for the, for the center to go through. That being said, I'm against how it went through. We knew about this a couple weeks ago during executive session, couldn't, we couldn't discuss it because it was an executive session. At that time, the number was somewhere in the ballpark of what it, what it is now. And then later on that afternoon, that evening, we came out here and spent $163,055 knowing that we had to fix the soil problem. I think we had our priorities out of whack. I don't feel that we should have approved that 163, I'll say it again, knowing that we had this here. So tonight, my vote will be a no on this item.
Any other discussion? Alderman MacIver?
Well, my problem is that I too voted, you know, obviously, I didn't support the clock tower, but I'm trying to, you know, this has to be done in order to move forward with the development of the property, so I kind of, while I agree with Alderman Kenny, you know, my, you know, keeping this as an independent item, you know, I know that we have to do that in order to move forward, so while I'm still against the clock towers, everyone knows that did pass, and, and, you know, it's kind of water under the bridge, and this is something that I feel, you know, that we have to do in order to continue the development.
There were soil issues on the Chase property, right?
No.
Didn't we have an amendment to the price or a credit for some sort of?
No. Soil remediation was, decontaminated soils, which was basically gasoline, so there was no...
Something else.
As far as structural, there was...
Could be excavating? I don't know.
That excavation had been done before we sold the property, if I remember correctly.
There was a credit, though, that we had to give after the contract was signed, and I'm trying to remember what it was. I thought it was soil.
I don't, I don't recall.
I don't recall, yeah.
I do recall that we gave, we voted on a credit af, during the due diligence, and for what, I thought it was soil, but I could be wrong, but it was after the contract.
I don't think it's for the same thing. This is like the, the fact that it's like the compaction or whatever.
Correct. This is structured, structural integrity versus remediation, contamination.
I wasn't, I don't recall that being, I could be wrong.
Have to check that. I remember some...
There was something during the due diligence.
There was something there. We can check that.
But it's, I guess, because it's all, I went, personally, I was under the assumption always that we were gonna have to give some sort of credit during the due diligence, because I just assumed it would come up, mistakenly thinking we had a similar thing on Chase.
And we are doing, we, we are kind of looking at, getting another estimate on this, correct? This is not to exceed, that's not the price necessarily.
Well, what's gonna happen is, all these items were discussed with the developer, and we did some, from the engineers, besides the testing, we did some field testing too, and came to a number based on what is considered normal within the field, for the parking lot, for example, certain remediation for the parking lot, you know, whether it be stone or type of fabric, whatever the case is, but the bottom line is that developer will be getting all these costs. It's gonna be in the developer's interest also to get the best price possible, because he's also paying for this. It's not the City of Darien paying, you know, the full 100%. So in many cases, for example, the parking lot remediation, while there's a value of $15,000 to it, that's the city's maximum cap, it's also a split with the developer. So there is still a 50/50 cost in respect to that portion of it, as well as the engineer, geotech analyst that's gonna be out there as well. They're gonna be splitting the cost with us, we're gonna be committed to, in that case, to $5,000, I believe it is. So, and with the building remediation, Shive Hattery, the architect, came back with their professional opinion, because they had seeked proposals for it, is to make sure that they were providing us with a statement that was accurate for that $75,000.
Okay, so everything's 50/50?
Except for the building remediation.
Well, that's what, we're voting on this, this, just that.
Well, the $200,000 also, the $200,000 is now 125,000.
Okay.
So there's three separate areas. One, the building that we, you have something from Shive that gives that dollar amount.
Correct.
And the parking lot, Dan, you had specifically, I think Lynch said what, how much again?
15.
15, plus the five is actually 20,000. The geotech analyst was 5,000, now it's just a third party.
So the amount includes a contingency in case we run into something between now and when they actually, I guess, what?
On excavation, or geotech finds additional, additional structural issues with the ground, then we have to dig, the developer has to dig further.
Alderman Belzak?
So just to be clear, barring any unforeseen contingencies, we're talking about $95,000.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we threw, we, I suggested the number of 125, just to cover any contingencies.
Rather than the 200.
Rather than the 200,000.
But we're voting on 200.
Well, that's what I'm gonna ask, I think we can have a motion to amend the dollar amount.
Yeah, all this information was gathered this, late this afternoon.
Yeah. So I think that's all we have to do, clerk, is just amend the amount. We need a motion to amend. Amend, okay. All right, so Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman MacIver? Okay, so then we're gonna take the vote first on the amendment, which is reducing it from 200,000 to 125,000. Seifert?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
No.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay, one absent. Now, we're going to take the vote on the original motion. Marques?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Wait a minute, hold there. The original motion?
As amended.
As amended. I'm sorry, I should've said that. Thank you. Okay, that was Marques?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Kenny?
No.
Belzak?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay, one absent. The motion passes, then we've come to the point of questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature for the, first from the alderman.
Madam Mayor, I thought I would, and bring it to the attention of the people at home watching this, during a consent agenda, there was a lot of different printer companies that we use, and in case somebody asked, why didn't we try to bundle all three printers with one company? When the city went to get bids for these printers, they got a better pricing buying these printers out individually, for whatever reason, I was surprised too, than to try to bundle them up.
Good point. Alderman Belkey?
And I wanted to elaborate a little bit about consent agenda A, which is the, the authorizing City of Darien to enter under contract on that website, and, you know, I just wanted to fill in some of the information that we used a site, or a service, I should say, that has a lot of experience in governmental websites, so there's, there was a lot of, what, what would you say? There was a lot of other government, I don't know the word, but anyway, they've been tested, and they were proven, and they showed, Scott showed us some websites to look at to make sure that we agreed and thought that they did a good job. And I wanted to bring it to the council's attention that Bloomfield Township and Flushing Township were the two main ones that, that if you're interested to start looking at, because the next phase is design and draft.
I believe they, when, when we had the demo on the screen, Bloomfield Township was one of the websites that was flashed up there. That was very, it was very pleasing.
It's worth exploring more, Bloomfield and Flushing.
And we can send, we can send all that out to the city council in an email tomorrow, and just show them some of the different designs that they have, and just some of the different options that'll be available as we move into the design phase.
Thank you.
And then, secondly, another reminder that my, that my town hall meeting is tomorrow at the library from 7:00 to 8:30, so please come, and especially people on 71st Street, if you can attend, that would be great.
Alderman Belkey, we had talked about that, just so the other aldermen weren't, I don't know their intentions on attending, but if we get aldermen there, there's an issue with the open meetings act, so I don't know that any of the elected officials were planning on, on coming there, but that's just a reminder.
Right, and if, if one person did come that was on a committee that I'm on, which is the municipal or the admin, as long as we don't talk about that subject, municipal or admin, we should be clear?
Well, municipal, yeah, that's pretty hard to, you know, those topics may randomly come up, so it becomes a little bit more problematic if any of the aldermen would show, or the mayor or the alderman would show.
Because a lot of the conversation will, will be restricted to my ward, so...
But somebody, let's say I was there, though, and somebody knew I was there, and they asked a question that reflected municipal services, and they said, oh, Alderman Marques is here, could you answer that? That would put me in a difficult position, because I really couldn't answer that.
Even to be in there without it posted would be problematic, so...
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be home.
I'll stay home as well.
So, so in other words, we'll all stay away from your town hall? The mayor could go, wouldn't you?
Yeah, the, the mayor could go, because you're really allowed, you would have two, except for the committee issue, you know, allow the committee issue, because there's been a committee, if one other committee member, so, but the mayor certainly could go, yes.
Any other questions, comments, and announcements?
A lighter note for Treasurer Coran. Officer Passick, that the chief introduced today, is a Brother Rice alum. Just thought I'd share that with you, sir.
Brother Rice?
Just, he's getting back to his high school.
You went to Brother Rice?
No. Saint Rita.
Oh, I get it.
This means at this point, we have to investigate the backgrounds of the rest of our police officers, to find how many went to Saint Rita.
Okay, I get it, okay. If there's no, I'd like to open it up to the audience. Dean Rodkin, did you want to come up and address the council?
Very great.
You've sat patiently through this whole meeting.
I'm Dean Rodkin, and I'm representing the Board of the Darien Historical Society, and on behalf of the Board, we would like to extend an invitation to the members of the city council and the city administration to join us at Old Lake Schoolhouse and Museum on Sunday, September 14th, at 1:00, to see what we are all about. And so we hope you will, and your families also, so we hope that you will be able to join us then, and we look forward to a positive response. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean, yes, we have to get around to that subject matter again, I think.
Thanks, Dan.
Alrighty, so if there's nothing else, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. Alderman MacIver, seconded by, nobody wants to leave, huh?
She's gonna random.
That's it, Alderman Kenny? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Dan, just brought that up.
Okay. Want me to take it? Is that where you're sitting?
No.